All right, seven o'clock, like to call the October sixth, regular meeting of the Mount Angel City Council to order. Please join me in the flex.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselor. Counselor Astorga is absent. Counselor Donahue here. Counselor Ott is absent. Counselor Hofer here. Counselor Bly here. Mayor Fatt.
Here. All right, so we are going to start this evening with a presentation of the Mount Angel Economic Development Plan. We have Brandon and Matt with us remotely. I'm gonna go ahead and let you guys take it away from there. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having us on the screen. So we're gonna kind of tag team the presentation. I'll share it. Let's see, I think I'm gonna have to get permission. There we go, I'm good to go now. Yeah, cool, thank you. So yeah, we'll go through, it's a pretty brief presentation. We will go through kind of a quick recap on where we are and where we've been since we met with you back in July. And then we've got sort of three pieces of information to present and discuss with you. All of this is described in more detail in the draft report that we sent out to you all. But we'll walk through each of these items, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats assessment, target industries and information, implementation strategies and actions. And just see if, see if we're on target, see if you have anything to add or suggest changing at this point. And then talk briefly about next steps. So I'm gonna start us off and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through item one and two A and then Brandon's gonna take over and do the rest of it, but it's fairly brief presentation. And I think you guys have a lot on your agenda tonight, so we're happy to be here as long as you want, but also happy to kind of zoom on through. So this is an element or a component of a regional project that we're working on with a firm called Johnson Economics, the North Marion County Regional Economic Development Strategy. And the intent really here is to create kind of a shared economic development vision and set of strategies for the region and also for the nine jurisdictions that are participating, including the city of Mount Angel. Want to just kind of note that there's a number of regional partners out there that are participating in this process and the expectation is that they continue to provide support and implementing a number of the strategies that we'll review this evening. So that includes Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments, the county, the SED Core and Business Oregon. We have a overall advisory committee for the project. They're all on that group as well as representatives of each of the jurisdictions. So we presented, or I presented back in July, early July, kind of the, the regional economic development strategy that had been adopted or not adopted yet, but identified up to that point. And talked to you about kind of which of those things seemed most or least applicable to Mount Angel. We took that input, we also had a meeting, in this case I say we, but Brandon met with folks from Discover Mount Angel and presented similar information to them, a little, little more informal and got feedback from them as well. And then since then, we've drafted this more specific document for Mount Angel as well as, you know, the other communities that are part of the, the process. So that's kind of what we've been doing. And again, I'll cover the first bit of this, which is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats piece. And then Brandon will cover the other pieces. I would say, we'll just kind of maybe stop after each of these slides and or sets of slides and just see if you have any thoughts, anything to add or anything that you think doesn't sort of ring true for Mount Angel, but. And this came from us talking to you and kind of pulling things from that regional document that seemed to make the most sense and sync up best with Mount Angel. So strengths, I'm, I don't usually read these kind of things, but I'm gonna kind of read this one just because there's a lot on the screen. So strengths, small town atmosphere, the cultural events and character that you have, the Oktoberfest and the kind of Bavarian aesthetic for buildings there. Natural resources in the area around Mount Angel. People talked about a high quality of life there and just a lot of engagement from your local businesses and loyalty to them. Opportunities, I think some of the things that we heard you all thought were opportunities. One, just to kind of diversify things so that you're having more things happening throughout the year as opposed to those events that happen once a year. Leveraging some of the partnerships you already have in terms of local and regional partnerships and your reputation. Opportunities for additional residential development and that you've got a certain amount of land that's available for that. And opportunity sites for potential new lodging facilities as well. I think we heard that there's an opportunity to simplify some of your local regulations to help expedite development and opportunities to preserve historic buildings and structures. Some of the things we heard in terms of weaknesses, still lack of local lodging capacity and options for folks who are visiting. Strong set of businesses downtown, but maybe not as cohesive and downtown core and not as much foot traffic partly as a result, maybe lack of exposure for some local businesses in the area. Infrastructure that's aging and that's gonna need to be replaced or upgraded. And, you know, a need for kind of expanded capacity to implement some of the things we're talking about. Seasonality of tourism, that's kind of the flip side of the fact that you've got things that happen primarily in a couple of times a year. And limited amount of diversity of employment types or business types. Threats, competition with neighboring towns. And I think that's one of the kind of goals is to figure out kind of what Mount Angels kind of economic place in the region is. A lack of starter homes for younger residents and, and younger families. And then again, just some competition between businesses there with other companies in the region and loss of nearby farmland over time as that's been developed or gone out of production. So that was a lot of talking, sorry about that. I'm gonna stop and just see if y'all have anything to comment on there again, anything to add or anything that doesn't make sense or, or that, you know, you think was missing from that.
I only have one note, Matt, and that is on the lack of exposure for some local businesses. I don't know how to put this, but one of my frustrations I've seen is we have a lot of people trying to do a lot of good things and it doesn't seem like any one of them's large enough to have a great following, to really give any exposure. If it's not in the local newspaper, you know, the city doesn't have enough Facebook followers. Discover Mount Angel doesn't have enough Facebook followers, the school district only has, you know, so I, one of the things that's always been on my mind is, is how do we create like, like a cohesive messaging, cohesive calendar, those kinds of things, and how do we, how do we help everybody get their messaging out? Because there's so many things that go on that we just, so the, the lack of exposure for some local businesses, I think could be wrapped into. We have a lot of groups and none of them are large enough to really have enough of a following to get the word out right now.
Got it, so just.
Yeah, we're at a point where if the school district doesn't promote it, it, it doesn't get promoted enough.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that, yeah, good comment. Any other thoughts on this one? I'm gonna assume that generally this kind of resonates or that we, you know, mostly on target here, but yeah, appreciate that comment. I'll also just say, should have said this earlier, that any, any comments you have after this too, be, please be sure and follow up with us. Email us comments if anything comes to mind that doesn't come to mind this evening. All right, well, I am gonna move to the next slide. And Brandon will kind of take over from here.
Thanks, Matt. And thank you all for having us again. So I'll cover these target industries which we discussed with you all. I should say Matt discussed with you all and I, I discussed with the Discover Mount Angel folks a few months back. And you can probably tell by now this kind of flows from what was discussed in the, the SWAT analysis as well. A lot of these are kind of based on what was identified as opportunities or things that are currently weaknesses that the city wants to improve. So as Matt mentioned, one of the top ones that came up in both of our meetings with you all was kind of more specialized stores, specifically grocery stores and retail businesses, couple of brand names that are companies that came up were Winco or Trader Joe's. So just the type of kind of more niche specialized businesses that are gonna attract people from around the region. Kind of something that makes, makes Mount Angel a little bit more unique in, in that regard. Similar restaurants came up in, in our meetings. And that, I think that kind of fits in with that category of more specialized stores and just more retail opportunities as well. Another one that came up with just gym and fitness facilities. Couple others were downtown attractions and destinations. I, I think that kind of ties in with, with restaurants. And I, I remember hearing that there's just kind of a lack of foot traffic downtown and lack of exposure downtown, so just getting more exposure, as you all mentioned, specifically to downtown area. Another one that came up was technical or vocational education programs. So just things to give residents more continuing education opportunities, but also kind of labor connections for local businesses, for, you know, people coming right out of high school. Another one that was discussed briefly was some light, more light industrial and manufacturing redevelopment. I believe there's some vacant or redevelopment opportunities in some areas of the city's industrial zones. So those could be some opportunities for redevelopment. Lodging and hospitality, I think Matt mentioned this is currently a weakness. There's just kind of a lack of lodging and hospitality and when you all have your, your, uh, your events, like the Oktoberfest, people are often staying in neighboring towns. So it'd be nice to, you know, have people lodging in, in Mount Angel. And then lastly here, it's a year-round sports facility, your complex, so just another type of venue or facility to attract people for more year-round events just outside of Oktoberfest. And specifically, I think a couple of examples that came up were like the youth sporting competitions or tournaments. So I will go ahead and pause there and see if anybody has anything to add or suggest changes to.
Did childcare and pre-K services come up?
That, I don't think that came up in our target industries discussion, but we do have that as one of the strategies, which we'll talk about here in one of the following slides. But that's a specific target industry that you want to kind of be elevated in the, in the plan. I think that's something we could also add.
This seems like something that there's a shortage of, there's kind of only like one option in town.
Yeah, and I think that also kind of helps another one of those strategies to kind of encourage younger families to, to move to the area or stay in the area, definitely major factor in their decisions. Right, anything else? As Matt mentioned, if anything does come, come to mind after the fact, after the meeting tonight, you're welcome to reach back out to us, but otherwise, just keep rolling here. So we have put together, I think, a list of about 20 strategies, mainly all pulled from the, the larger list of regional strategies from the plan that we, the regional plan that we shared with you all back in the summer. And these are just kind of pared down specific, more towards the city. So it's kind of a lot to go through, so I'll, I'll do it kind of at a high level. And like Matt said, we'll pause at the end of each slide and let me know what we got right and what we got wrong. So this first category of types of strategies is land supply and site readiness. We understand the city recently did a housing need analysis and also recently did some housing code updates. So these kinds of land supply strategies might be lower priority for the time being. That said, it's still good to, you know, periodically, every five to 10 years, revisit your, your land supply and housing needs. And, you know, as you know, housing availability and affordability are pretty major factors in, in economic development as well. So those, those first four actions here, low priority, kind of longer term strategies for now. And then this last strategy, more of a high level policy strategies to update comprehensive plan to include policies that are focused on encouraging economic development and, and housing goals. And we identified this one as more of a medium term and, or medium priority and kind of shorter timeframe, maybe two to five years. I think that's partly because the city's current comprehensive plan is maybe a little outdated and probably has some room for improvement in some areas. So I think that's, it's partly why that's more medium priority. So I will pause there and see if folks have anything to add or suggest. If not, keep moving along. So the next couple of strategies, categories of strategies, that is, is to expand employment opportunities and help promote small business development. So these strategies, as you can tell, have a lot more of a focus on kind of collaborating with other regional partners such as SED Core and Discover Mount Angel. They're mainly focused on, you know, building business outreach and, and helping with marketing and, and just working with all the resources that are available in the region and throughout the state. So these are all kind of more medium priority, these are things that were discussed a little more at, at our previous Discover Mount Angel and City Council work session a few months ago. So since they're all medium priority, we figured they're all kind of more urgent needs, so kind of more near-term timelines. So within one to two years for, for a couple of the strategies and two to five years for some of the others. And then small business development, things like working with some of the community colleges and career programs like Chimacita Community College, hopefully I'm pronouncing that correctly. Chimacita, thank you. And SED Core to, you know, help, help build up the local labor force and help keep workers in, in Mount Angel. So similarly, these would be kind of more medium priority, although we do think the development of an incubator space and development of a shared fabrication space might be kind of bigger lift. So we figured those would be kind of longer timeline goals, maybe five to 10 years. And, and of course, these are just very rough estimates of the timelines, just why we kind of give that broad range of five to 10 years. And then, yeah, just also lastly, providing information and education to, you know, help market and provide exposure to local businesses. And that's of course a, a higher priority and more immediate need, one to two year timeline. So I will pause there as well, see if folks have anything to add.
Are most cities struggling if they're not on the I-5 corridor?
I don't know if they're necessarily struggling per se, but I do think it helps a lot to be closer to I-5, just having more exposure and just accessibility to, you know, the volume of traffic that's going up and down the I-5. But, you know, there, there are exceptions. I know Silverton is, isn't necessarily right on I-5, but I think they're, they've been a little bit more successful with, you know, tourism goals and, and objectives.
Yeah, and I, I think just size of the city and capacity and resources play into it a little bit as well, as well as proximity to I-5, so.
I got two questions. One, was there any outreach or response from our local Chamber of Commerce with any of this?
No, I don't believe so, we didn't.
Is there any of these actions that you would normally see a Chamber of Commerce participate in in other communities?
I mean, certainly some of the things under the support and expand employment, maintaining and enhancing business outreach and communication. Often, you know, they might participate in putting together a marketing plan or helping implement it. So those capable, I would say, are ones that chambers would generally, you know, have some role in.
I think in some of our funding strategies, chambers are, are listed. Potential partners, which we'll talk about here in the next couple of slides.
I just want to make sure, because we are unique in having Discover Mount Angel and I think they do amazing stuff. I just, the chamber was notably absent out of the report, so I was curious of that. And then the other question is, is partnering with SED Core, is that through some kind of existing agreement at the county level? Or how would we have to partner with SED Core to accomplish this? Because they are a private entity, correct?
They, I think, you know, are available to provide technical resources, but I don't know exactly how that happens, sort of the mechanics of that. That's definitely something we can find out a little bit more about and, and let you know. I, I expect our partner on this project, Johnson Economics knows a little bit more about that, but happy to kind of get back to you on that and just describe that in a little more detail.
Okay, I'd be, before they're listed as partners, I'd like to know what avenue there is to actually partner with them.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, a couple of these things are things that they tend to take the lead on at a regional level. So updating Oregon Prospector, you know, they're listed there because that's a thing they help do. Generally, that's essentially a, a database, a business database. And, you know, same thing in terms of item number eight here. So there's a number of things that are just kind of in their wheelhouse. But yeah, we can definitely circle back to you on what that partnership looks like, just in terms of the mechanics of it and how you help utilize or get them to utilize their resources on your behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think there's also a, so for the regional plan, there's, I think, a technical advisory committee of sorts. And I think there's one or two people from SED Core who are serving on that, that committee. So I, I think they've had a hand in putting some of these strategies together as well. So we can try and get in touch with those particular individuals and.
Yeah, for sure.
Get in contact. So let's keep on moving along here. So next strategy or set of strategies is the workforce initiatives, which we kind of touched on to a certain degree with the expanding employment and small business strategies on the previous slide. So you know, things like supporting connections with the, the school district and K through 12 programs and just various career, career centered organizations, like job placement organizations. And just promoting workforce training, resources. Again, these are things that would be partnered with various regional partners like Willamette Workforce and, and SED Core again. And we also have listed the Chambers of Commerce as a potential partner for supporting connections with the various regional entities. Then of course, circling back to housing policies and regulations. We did hear that there is a kind of a lack of opportunities for starter homes. So revisiting some housing policies and regulations, kind of in the, the longer term, but maybe more of a medium priority to help the, support those, those opportunities. And similarly with the regional affordable housing developers, local and regional affordable housing developers. And then, as we touched on earlier, opportunities for childcare, more childcare capacity in the city. So this would also be more of a medium term, medium priority strategy. So any, any comments on these sets of actions? Think we can jump to the final set of strategies. So here are the last few, these are funding sources. So I think a couple of things that came up from our meetings were issues with lack of infrastructure, aging infrastructure. So these strategies are more geared towards funding for public improvements, however, they, they would be kind of more medium to low priority and longer term strategies. And there'd be a little bit more reliant on, you know, grant funding from, from state and regional sources, such as like state highway trust funds and other, you know, ODOT kind of community development, funding sources. So any thoughts, suggestions on this last set?
Questions? I had a question on 18, so it just says general funds for public improvements and maintenance of public space. What do you mean by that? I mean, the general fund is, is what our ad valorem rate is, you know, it kind of, there's not much to do with just the general fund, right, Tara? I mean, we get what we get and then we divvy it out, correct? So on that, I don't know that that's an action unless you, you're gonna expand it to say, you know, allocation of general funds for this or reserve accounts for that, those kinds of things. So 18 bothers me a little bit. I'd like us to be a little more specific and I'd like us to shorten the timeline.
Yeah, good, good comments. I think that's just a recognition that you do, as you say, divvy up your general fund dollars and use some of that money to do these things, you know, pay for maintenance of public improvements and maintenance of public gathering spaces or other public spaces. And I think, yeah, I mean, it's spot on in terms of, you're not waiting five to 10 years to do that, unless we're talking about trying to generate somehow additional money. But as you say, you know, that, that set of funds is based on your permanent tax rate. There's not a lot to do other than growing the size of the city to increase that funding, you know, other than just how you divvy that up. So I think all fair points, we can take a look at that strategy and sort of generally how it's presented here. And, and I think reflect all that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'd just say, let's, you know, let's clean 18 up to, to be a, a real action.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we can do that, thank you.
Good.
Any other comments or questions on funding sources? If not, we can probably wrap up with our final slide. So yeah, just quickly go over next steps. So I think this is our last meeting with, with the city. So based on the comments that we've just received from you all, we'll make some, some modifications to the plan and finalize it based on everything you shared with us. And then from there, I think it's just kind of up to the city as to how you would want to implement this and kind of acknowledge it. The city could go through adoption process if you wanted, or could go just accept it through resolution to kind of acknowledge that you went through this and that it's something that the city is gonna use to help guide. City is going to use to help guide economic development, um, and then from there, it'll be up to you all to implement the plan. Although you'll have the the regional partners that we've discussed to to help, uh, support you along the way, so. Thank you again for for your time and I guess we can pause for any last lingering questions or comments, suggestions.
I think we're good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having us. And again, if you do have anything, any other thoughts, um, after the meeting. Uh, do feel free to contact us and, uh, you know, be happy to check in further. But yeah, thanks for the time tonight. I appreciate it.
Appreciate the work.
Yep. Bye bye.
Good night. Bye.
Right, next we have, uh. Do we have appearance of any interested citizens? Okay, uh, let's move on to review of accounts payable. Counselor Bala.
Yeah, I'm the auditor. Paying nine thousand two hundred dollars progress. Uh, just quick questions, I assume you're the bid process and. How often do you go through the process for services?
Uh, it's, there's one later on in your packet.
Well, I saw that this kind of.
Um, we don't, we don't have, there's no set timeframe that we have to do them, um. The, when we got our current auditors, they were the only ones that responded to our request.
How long have been?
According to the contract, the initial term was one year plus two renewal terms of two years. So we'll be completing our fifth year.
So last, last month. I asked if on our report. Here is this, uh. Is it by law that we have to print out every expenditure that we do and exceed every expenditure, or is this just an option? Uh, we can, my question was, can we just have something that's over X amount of dollars? If if we design.
There's no law, you don't even have to have this. We don't even have to have this in the council packet. Nothing, because you already have signers and you already have the budget, which requires us to stay within. So this, this is, this has been, uh, because it's always been this way, if that makes sense.
Well, I think it's good that the council sees some of the better wins for the city. This has a whole segue like it had to be, or we might.
Yeah, so so you can, we can modify, Mark and I had this discussion and he was going to bring it up later, maybe, I don't know. I'll just say it now.
I was, actually, it was going to be, you know, part of the AP discussion.
Okay, um, so our financial software has two capabilities to filter what you see. We can either filter it by the total invoice amount. Um, or we can filter it down to the, um, account level, which you see on the right hand side. Um, it says segment fund or segment department, we can filter it out by that amount. So a good example usually is Boxers Hardware. Um, we, because they, because each purchase is a separate invoice. We can say, okay, if the, if one invoice is split three different ways. The three different accounts, we can say, well, you want to see anything at five hundred dollars or above at that level. Or we can say, we want to see it at the whole invoice level, so you don't want to see an invoice. For one customer, no matter how many, um, line items there are, then it'll filter that out.
We have options, so, thank you.
And the amount can be, it's, it's an open box, so I can set it to cents or dollars or hundreds, thousands, whatever.
I mean, how hard is it to do what the way we are doing it, pushing a button?
Mm hmm. It's no different doing it with filters either, like we just filter it, save it, and then just hit go every time. And we don't have to fuss a bit, so.
Well, I'm kind of used to seeing it laid out like this, so.
Sure, that's, that's, as as a whole, I I agree with that. I just wondered if there was an option.
You have any questions on the report itself?
I do not.
Counselor Donahue? Council President Eater?
No.
I personally think we can scan it as fast as you can print it, so. Maybe it's just me. I had, uh, two questions. One is dust control on Academy. Isn't Academy part hours and part county? Or do we own all of Academy?
We don't own it all, but all that, all that you talk about.
That gets shared?
Yeah, so.
Like alternate, who does it?
The east part is the counties and I think it starts at Leo or Gillis somewhere up there. And then everything to the west of that is we maintain.
Okay. And then.
Oh, that was good, third direction on that road. It doesn't pick up and get on either side, city limits. If you go from, I don't know what the streets name are, uh, from pavement to pavement, from the main highway to Humper.
No, so from the highway up to Leo or Gillis is maintained by the city. We own that. And then the county owns the east portion.
All up to, yeah.
Up to Humper.
Do we do dust control on the whole thing or just our portion?
Just on the gravel, because a portion of it is, is paved.
I'm just saying on the county part, we don't do anything.
Oh, we do.
That's what I was going to get at. So whether it's gravel or not, if it's ours or county, we do the dust control on that whole thing.
Otherwise, we.
So the city goes to Leo?
Leo, yes, without looking, I'm, yeah, without looking, it would matter.
Anyone? Why do I ask? Because I'm interested in it.
Is it online?
Your learn map?
All right, how about Alan gets back to us on that?
Maps, there's. Yeah, but on the city website, we have maps.
We'll get back to you.
Anytime.
Okay, perfect. Um, I have one other question. Maybe I've just never caught this before, which is embarrassing for me. But is it common for well number six to have a ten thousand dollar power bill?
Yes, because we haven't been running well seven, so, uh, well, six has been running constantly.
Okay.
Yeah. Is fail, if you will, um, at well seven. So that's why you have a hypochloric system in your packet tonight.
And that's why well six has got such a high power bill last month, okay? It's what I needed to know. All right, uh, moving on, do we have any comments or corrections to last month's minutes? I would entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the consent.
Second, uh, we have a motion from Council President Eater, seconded by Counselor Hofer.
Counselor Bala.
Hi.
Counselor Hofer.
Hi.
Counselor Astorga is absent. Counselor Donahue?
Hi.
Counselor Ott is absent.
Hi. Moving on, I'd like to go ahead and modify the agenda and I'd like to do item nine E next. For our youth advisory council application and her very patient family, who's sitting here with us through all of this. So we have, I gotta find where it is in the packet, sorry.
Page one thirteen.
So we have an application here for us and this is yours, Mr. City Manager Daniel.
Yeah, well, I have to get to it. So, um, yes, as we all know and understand, we have a set, um. Uh, the Mountain Eagle Youth Advisory Council, um, has been set, uh, for, um, our group here for our community. Which is intended to be a group of nine to twelve players, um, and it's been making a difference in the county. We've certainly been looking over time to add five to ten JFK students to be a part of this council. Um, although we know that, uh, as we've tried, um, we've only been successful with maybe two at a time. And that's usually turned into one and, uh, we've done our best, uh, I know that. Other members sitting here today are doing their best as well to try and, um. Recruit other youths from high school, uh, coming to be a part. So, uh, today, we have one application and I've not mattered before, but she's sitting there. And, um, so Celeste, can you pronounce your last name for me? Thank you, I would have actually done the adjustments. So she has, um, applied to be, um, part of our advisory council for one year. Uh, for a term ending on June thirty first, twenty twenty six. Uh, the application is here as attached, um, it's very well written. So I want to enter this council and make the appointment of Celeste to the youth advisory council and. Uh, we'll move forward.
Excellent. I see here Celeste is in ninth grade, so hopefully we can have a youth advisory counselor for more than one year. And, uh.
This, this one, we're, the one and five and ten is this one?
One.
Yep.
So the, the goal is to eventually build the council so that it's its own group at the high school level. And then they would send a representative, but so far, despite best efforts, the most we've gotten is two. We're still only one representative, so either way, we still have one representative who is appointed and comes to the meetings. Um, and acts on the behalf of the youth advisory council. So. Any questions for applicants since she's here? Good. All right, and you got a commitment for a ride to get here, right? Perfect. All right, uh, having no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to appoint Celeste to the position of youth advisory council for when your term ended on June thirty.
Second, uh, we have a motion from Counselor Bala, seconded by Counselor Hofer. Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Ott is absent. Counselor Bala.
Hi.
Counselor Eater.
Hi.
Counselor Hofer.
Hi.
Counselor Astorga is absent. Counselor Donahue.
Hi.
Mayor Fowler.
Hi. With that, congratulations. You're welcome to stick around or you're welcome to have the rest of your evening back. It's up to you guys. You all heard our feelings if you leave. All right. Moving on to unfinished business, uh, we have the police collective bargaining agreement. Sorry, thick packet, trying to get there. All right. This is actually, uh, list is.
I wrote the cap, but.
Threw the gap, but I'll, I'll be happy to carry it. So you have before you the, um, red line version of the collective bargaining agreement to see where we were and where we've gone. And, uh. We have reached a tentative agreement with the Mountain Eagle Police Association. Um, the union ratified their draft agreement. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago. The summary of the economic changes has been made on the cow. I'll read them out loud. Uh, MAPPA is Mountain Eagle Police Association members. Uh, will receive a nine percent increase to wages for the current fiscal year. And a five percent increase to the wages for the next two fiscal years. No cost of living increases will be applied to wages for the duration of this contract. Certification pay has been changed from a flat fee to a percentage of hourly base wage. Bilingual pay has increased from three percent to five percent, the hourly base wage. Longevity pay was changed from one, changed to one percent for six years, three percent for twelve years, five percent for eighteen. And seven percent for twenty four years of the hourly base wage. Education pay has been changed from a flat fee to a percentage of an hourly base wage. And now includes the associate and or masters. Um, the action necessary to implement the agreement is for the city council to authorize me to sign. The agreement with the police union and to pass the salary resolution. Setting the wage scales for the duration of the contract.
Do you have any questions on the contract? Comments, concerns?
Yeah. Uh, seems like very large increases. Our clips, you're. We didn't really talk about numbers, but where it's going. With the other workers of the city gods for new year. So I'm open to hear why that is.
Well, Tara, correct me if I'm wrong, so we did, um, for all the unrepresented employees got. Um, cost of living increase, um, based on the CPI. Until such time as we settled the contracts.
And that is still ongoing, the contract, that is still ongoing.
So this is only one contract. We are still in negotiations with our public works groups. And so once we settle this contract, once we settle the public works contract, and I intend to come back to council. Um, so that we can, um, give unrepresented employees a wage increase. So what was given has been very minimal and I'm hoping that we will have a better increase moving forward. Now, as it relates to the collective bargaining agreement. Um, I think we offered them. Four percent. With an additional two to four based on the CPI for the first year. We offered them for the second year, four percent with a two to four. And then we offered for the third year, four percent with a two to four. So if the maximum CPI came in at four percent or above, they would have looked at, um. Eight, eight and eight, which would have, uh, been a twenty four percent increase. But CPI is trending lower now, um, it came in at two point. Seven percent, uh, this particular fiscal year. Um, and it's anybody's guess where it's going to go, but I would imagine it's going to continue to trend low. So if, let's just say maybe it was seven, seven and seven is what we offered, um. What it might have been, who knows what it would have been, um, that's twenty one percent. Over the course of the contract, um, this with, um, nine, five and five. Um, is nineteen percent, the lowest it probably would have been, um, for us. Was in eighteen percent and six, six and six. So we settled it to one percent higher than our, would have, would have likely been on the lowest end for the city.
Is this an. I want to phrase this in previous time, perhaps where those increased, had those increases been. Let's say over the last, previous three year contract.
Well, it should be redlined with your contract.
I, I can't recall.
I have things.
Well, I, I just don't want to speak out.
Well, I, I just don't want to speak out of turn and say something that's not true, so.
So the, uh, according to our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Bargain unit members shall receive a COLA adjustment based on the CPI for the previous year with a minimum of two percent, maximum of four. Effective July first, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Bargain unit members shall receive a market adjustment of one point five percent for each of the years listed. The market adjustments and the COLA adjustments will be applied to base wages at the same time for one total wage adjustment each of the applicable years. So it was two to four, two to four, two to four with a one point five every year.
Two to four.
Two to four.
With a added one point five, three, nine, four percent every year.
So three and a half to six and a half, three and a half to five and a half.
Ten and a half.
I couldn't tell you exactly what it actually was.
But part, part of all this is we're trying to get up to where our wages are. We're incentivizing people to stay because they're not gonna be pulled away to go to get them trained and, oh, well, I was offering more, someone was offering more in Perry County. I mean, we're, we for years have been behind the pay scale. So yes, it might hurt when you look at it on paper, but yeah.
Where are we on this?
Training people.
We've been increasing at one point five every year.
Well, we're, it, it depends on which, which you happen to look at. So I think we are within our, I forget the word, our.
Comparators.
Well, yeah, there was actually a word.
Statutory.
Such, yeah, statutory comparator. So if you look three up, three down, I think we're right in there, if not a little bit higher than the middle. Um, but that's, but that's the thing. Our statutory comparators aren't here in the valley. And they're not, they're not a part of, you know, the metro area. They're not a part of what's going on in Salem.
Can I ask where they are, who they are?
Oh, we know Jervis is one. Um.
I'm trying to remember.
Hubbard.
Maybe Hubbard, yeah.
Jervis, Hubbard, um, and then you have little ones like, uh, Kokil.
Kokil.
Uh, Tillamook.
Yep.
And.
Like there was one overused. Like Umatilla or something like that.
That's not one we use this year, or that, that doesn't ring a bell, but I can maybe find one while you guys continue to talk.
Yeah, and as it, as it relates to two of our closest neighbors, so Hubbard and Jervis were below Hubbard and Jervis. We're still below that.
And we're still below Silverton, correct?
Yes.
Sorry, am I gonna jump ahead?
What's our goal then on that? Wouldn't we know more then?
Well, I'll tell you this. My goal has been to make this police department as whole as possible. The problem is I've been losing employees to Silverton. I've lost employees to Jervis. I've lost employees to law. For probably a number of reasons. Pay is likely one of the number one reasons. Um, the last one who left here and went to Jervis said, not directly to me, but to the organization. That he was getting a five dollar an hour raise. And accompanied by a variety of other things that were promised him to come over and work for the city of Jervis. Whether that actually materialized or not, is not worth investigating for me, not worth the time. But I, I do know that we are competing in a very, very tight market. Um, qualified applicants are difficult to find. We've tested, I think, no less than five, six, maybe seven people who last a number of months. Who have all failed testing. We're not gonna lower our standards because that's not what the community deserves. When you dial nine one one, that's not who you want on, on the front porch. There's somebody who can't read, write, talk, relate. Um, pass, pass what we need them to pass to the academy, drive fast to your house and take care of your family. We need a highly qualified, highly trained person, and we can only attract them by having a quality organization and one that pays them fairly. DPSST recently did a survey on police officers. And why they continue to serve. Pay benefits were certainly pretty significant in that, in that realm. I've been a police officer now. Paid police officer for thirty-eight, going on thirty-nine years. Although pay's not everything. I've been doing this for a really long time. It's the first thing that these guys start talking about when they go door to door. It's the first thing that they start looking at. Whether or not they can afford to send their kids to whatever school they want to send their kids to. Whether they let them play sports. And how involved they're gonna be in the community. So. The end goal is to do exactly what has been stated before. To try and make this a destination location. It's a very unique community, extremely low crime. Lot of, lot of satisfaction about the job that we actually do here. But you know, we don't have all the really cool sexy things. We're not running, you know, fifty, sixty miles an hour to a call. We're not arresting people every night, calling them off to the jail. Not doing a variety of different things, but that's because of the community that we live in and the lifestyle we're able to continue to support. So because of that, we do need to catch up. And this was a community for a really long time. That only brought people in. They made them sign a contract for three years. If they left during that three-year period, then they threatened them with lawsuit to repay all the, all the salary and the training that they had acquired, um, while they were here for the three years. In fact, when I started here, I was talking to some of our employees back then, and they talked to me as if they were in jail because they were doing time. Until they could get out of their contract, which was illegal at the time. Which we subsequently did away with so that people wouldn't have that impediment to actually working here. Um, so we continue to try and make it better, try and make it, um, so that they can actually afford to be here. Um, and I don't do a lot of research in what it, you know, what, what it takes to be qualified for food stamps and that type of thing. But I can tell you this. In the last contract, we just climbed out of an officer with a very large family being qualified for food stamps. And he was, he was upset with me because now he could barely feed his family, but he was no longer qualified for food stamps because we gave him the raise. I think we should be paying our police employees significantly more than being called like for food stamps. Because it's often just to make it.
I have our, yeah, free down.
Go ahead.
Amesville, Kokil, Toledo, Myrtle Creek, Hubbard, Nissa. Jervis is too small to be considered our statutory comparator.
So the only one that's even close is Hubbard. So the only one that's even close and competing in the same market as Hubbard.
At Amesville is not too far.
Uh, and also. Toledo.
Lido, Kokil, Myrtle Creek, Nissa. Besides Amesville and.
All right, anything else?
I just think, uh, looking at the numbers. Bless it. Negotiations for years. Don't know what the, the end, end game would be here, I mean, how far we have to keep increasing. Uh, what we would be doing if we weren't trying to get to the top. Um, or what the goal is, I don't know. Uh, also, what we've settled here for will affect the rest of your contract negotiations.
Oh, I'm not naive, I'm not naive to, to think that it won't. Because I know that there have been conversations between both groups at different times and different statements were made in the presence of each of the different labor groups about their contracts, so.
So three years, salaries itself, there's some other bonuses in here. I saw that get increased. That you, they could add on to. Um, and we go from, you know, twenty percent or more, and I'm founded in three years. I understand why you try to retain with the plan, might be trying to retain, maybe there's a different plan, big fat bonus after five years. Um, anyway. Those are my thoughts.
Counselor Donnie. Counselor Hooper.
The only comment I'll make is we will probably never catch up with some of these bigger cities because their, their wages are not staying any of their going up just like ours are. So we're never gonna catch up to them.
Hmm.
We could, but we're not going to.
Well, I guess I get the blessing of the last word on this one. Um, so I got, there's three things I want to talk about. One is, and I've mentioned this before, we are in a unique opportunity to make up the difference and become competitive. We have two vacancies. We have savings from the fact that we just signed, uh, our chief of police to a partial salary because of the dual duties. We have an opportunity to make up a lot of ground and not feel it. Because even if we made up all this ground and more right now, we won't feel it this year. The amount of time it takes for us to bring somebody on board and start paying them, we're gonna have enough vacancy savings to do whatever we want to do and do it right this year. That being said, anybody who's run a business knows it's a heck of a lot, almost said the wrong word, but a heck of a lot more expensive to bring someone in, train them up, and then have them go somewhere else. It's easier, it's cheaper to maintain than it is to bring people in, especially our police officers. How long are they in academy if we don't bring one from another agency?
Sixteen weeks, and then we are training them for sixteen weeks at a middle. That's great. So they're in essence, not really good west in a solo capacity for at least almost forty weeks.
So we lose ten months every time we try to bring somebody on board. Unless we lure someone who's already an officer somewhere else, and even then, there's still a little bit of ride along training time, I assume, correct?
That's right. It's gonna be less though.
I understand your point as to how it affects other contracts, Counselor Black. Um, I would admit there's only one of our employee unions that, um, is asked to run towards gunfire and be certified, um. But the other thing too is I'm looking at these pay scale as it relates to some of the other businesses around here. And I haven't confirmed this on my own. But from what I can tell, this would put our administrative assistant, for example, um, at or only slight of, slightly above an entry level position at the Amazon plant right now. Based on what I'm hearing from people who are going and applying for that job, that's about what the starting wage is right now. And I would assume that we are looking for someone to put in more effort, have more interpersonal skills, balance more tasks, and just in general, do more thought provoking work than what's likely the minimum requirements of Amazon in Woodburn right now, a ten-minute drive to work. So.
That's true. We're gonna hell with time and finding out the case.
So with that, we've had, at le, we have been fully staffed for, I believe, less than ninety days in the last three years.
Okay.
I think you came to one meeting and said, I'm happy to say we're fully staffed. And I think by the next meeting, we were no longer fully staffed.
That's why I tell chiefs that, don't ever say that because doesn't work for me.
I think that was more times. So. With that, I understand, looking at this, um, at a first year level, it's a huge jump, counselor. But I think that we have been so far behind and we have been hemorrhaging cash by training officers to have them walk out for more money is, it needs to stop. So I would just say, not only am I in support of this, but I'm in support of actually offering slightly higher than this.
Did we, uh, we offered to have them take their cars home? In previous.
Yeah, so they, they are, they are taking their cars home. Um, yeah, but it's not, it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
So that means that to be at full discretion of the chief.
So they have four years of the car.
No, they, they can, um, only, of course, while they're on duty, they have four years of the car. But they can only drive the car from here to home and home to here. And they're not paid when they leave here, and they're not paid when they leave their house. They start their ship when, when they're supposed to start their ship, and they end their ship when they were ending their ship. The use of the car to commute is a benefit to both the city and the employee.
So what is the difference right now to get to our neighbors? I know one of our neighbors has a much higher tax rate that we'll probably never touch.
Yeah, Jervis is eight. You know, we're, we're four for the.
Understandable.
Um. So, I have Tara helping me.
Yeah, it was, one of them was to go from ninety percent to a hundred and thirteen. Well, sorry, I shouldn't say that. Had to go from nine to thirteen point something percent to get to Jervis.
Okay.
And then to get to Silverton was a hundred, it was twenty-some percent, was it? Or I'll, I'll load up, I've got it. Oh, Silverton's less, so okay, so sticking to Silverton, it was, no, because Jervis has nine steps.
Hmm, yeah. I think.
Here, let me, I got it right here.
As opposed to a percentage, can, can we just maybe do it in simpler numbers, like dollars per hour?
Sure.
I don't know if it's, instead of trying to calculate a percentage, do we just, is that a number we know that's easier? And we can back into this?
Well, we can, we can talk about where they're at versus where we intend to be.
Um, to be at or above Silverton, the nine percent increase would have to be a hundred and thirteen point one five percent. Which would put our top step or bottom step at thirty-one ninety-six and our top step at forty dollars and seventy-nine cents per hour.
So we're talking a dollar fifty an hour to match Silverton at the top step.
I don't have, I can only look at one thing at a time, so.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm saying, so it's a buck fifty an hour at, at our top step to match Silverton right now.
To be at or above Jervis, who has nine steps, the nine percent increase would need to be twenty point six five percent.
Another requirement percent.
Yeah.
Another, yeah, um.
And I think that one's probably unrealistic based on the difference in the ad valorem rights.
Yeah, so that our bottom step would be thirty-four dollars and seven cents an hour, and our top step would be forty-three dollars and forty-nine cents per hour.
So what I'm understanding is, is if we go an additional four percent on top of what has been negotiated for, which honestly only equates to about a buck and a half an hour. We can make up this difference and we can make it up using our current vacancy savings. And we run less of a risk of losing officers, we run less of a risk of falling behind. And we run a higher opportunity to potentially, uh, acquire already qualified candidates as opposed to the ten months in academy when we're taking people right out of school. Right out of school. Tara, I might have you correct me, but this seems. Is there anything I said there that seems outlandish or incorrect?
Can you restate it?
So for a dollar fifty an hour, which equates to at or less than four percent, actually less than, yeah, just right around four percent.
Over four percent.
Four point one something. That would put us on par with, with Silverton, which would. That four percent, we're going to have more than that in vacancy savings.
I can't confirm that because you're adding four percent to nine percent, I, I couldn't, I couldn't say. I apologize, but I can't.
I'm willing to bet we would. So with that, I'll just let it be known that I think that. We need to take care of this and I honestly think that we should add a buck and a half an hour to. The salary stated in section two. And I want us to be on par with our neighbors and I want us to have a competitive. Advantage in, in getting fully staffed, how many officers do we have right now, five?
There are five counting me.
So five including Mark that's covering the entire community, seven days a week. We need to fix this.
Guess I'll say I'm not positive that we're fixing it where we want it. And like inflation, once the rates go up so much, you never get it back, it just builds on, it compounds. And I guess I haven't. Bring this to me tonight and I want to then, we do decide we want to add to it with. No real proof in front of it, so, um, yeah. I will be building a wall against both of those.
Well, it's up to the other three counselors if they'd like to make a motion and what is included in that motion.
Well, I. I've been around for a couple of these contracts and I know we're on a trajectory to try to catch up. I'm comfortable with. Authorizing city manager move forward with this.
Any seconds or other motions?
I agree with everything you're saying. But this idea of something like that tonight, that would happen and all the numbers actually in front of us, I mean, guys are gonna leave for a dollar fifty an hour. Somewhere else, there's gotta be something else in there that they're leaving because of not just a dollar.
We can table it till next month and come back with the extra buck fifty an hour, so everybody has the numbers in front of them.
Sound good to me?
Do you want to make that motion?
I move that we table it till next month's meeting.
You think our association will be upset that we tabled the contract in hopes of. Looking at. Other dollar amounts?
Can we supersede what they agreed on?
We can go up, not down.
Yeah, but they can reject if you offer. So.
Well, let me, let me, let me see.
I appreciate the negotiation. I've been, I don't want. To have to say no, I just. You're asking me to. To approve something that may, first year, yeah, I get it. I don't think, you know, I also don't think money itself is the one that's. Having a hard time, makes you have a hard time. There's other factors. There's always some different ways to provide incentives for longevity.
We do have some, I think I need to stop real quick, cause I had a motion in a second. So I had a motion to table this to get represented next month from counselor Eater, seconded by counselor Donahue. And I believe we have to vote on that before I open it back up to any additional conversation. Is that correct, Colby? Or does it at least sound right?
You kind of, you kind of stopped it during the second, so this seems more like additional discussion at this point.
Any other comments before we recognize counselor Eater's motion?
I guess I don't want to cause. The renegotiations to go sideways is my concern. Delaying it. Again, we're trying to do a good thing.
Chief. So thank you, your labor group. You know, not everybody gets to hear what I get to hear in the police department. Not everybody gets to have the conversations that I get to have. And it's public record. City of Silverton gave their police department to get paid as over the top of what had been negotiated. City of Hubbard has done the same thing. Without confirmation, a member of their bargaining team confronted one of our bargaining team members. About where they were actually coming in at. But once again, they voted and they ratified the contract already. I want to state the record that we were past actual negotiations, we were actually in mediation when we came to this agreement. And if we hadn't come to an agreement in mediation, I was ready to go to arbitrage.
So I have one more question. If we modify anything in the contract, does it have to go back?
Yes, it will need, it will need to go back. Uh, for them to examine it and. They can always prove me, prove me wrong, but if you are offering them additional money. I don't see them not taking.
And then there has been the trend that I've seen in other communities as well, speaking with other mayors that honestly. Police force is one of the most important things in the community and that's why everybody is trying to make sure that they are comparable and competitive with others. It honestly wasn't an idea out of thin air this evening, I promise you that. So accidentally buried your second, do you want to remake your motion or change it?
I move that we table this to the next month's meeting.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion from counselor Eater, seconded by counselor Donahue.
Got discussion on that motion?
You want to have discussion on that motion? Okay.
What does it give us? Do you come back with more information? What would that information be? What does it give us?
Gives us confirmation that some of the numbers we're throwing around.
More thought in our heads.
And hopefully the other two are here.
Can I have a roll call now?
Counselor Donahue.
Aye.
Counselor Ah is absent, counselor Bala.
Aye.
Counselor Eater.
Aye.
Counselor Hooper.
Aye.
Counselor Sorga is absent. Mayor Bell. Mayor Bell.
Nate.
Could, could I get the direction?
Please.
I have no idea what the council wants me to bring back.
I know what I want you to bring back. I, I, I want to see what puts us on par down the road.
With who?
Silverton.
For how long?
Silverton for the next three years.
So do you want me to copy their negotiated contract?
I want to see what the difference in, in the rate would be for us. For Mount Angel, for Mount Angel to match Silverton. Cause there's a.
Is that our? Just, just pay it or everything else?
Just pay it.
Just pay over three years because their contract is, is different, they have. Chief, what do they have, do you remember, it's, it's a percentage and then it's a lower, oh, I have it right here.
I want to see what it takes for us to be on par with Silverton, especially considering. Our officers are running code four miles down the road to help them out and it seems ridiculous that they're doing that for less pay than what Silverton's paying their officers.
Okay, cause they have a set market adjustment with a two to four in years two and three. So I have no idea what they're gonna get.
Okay, so then let's base it on. Walking into next year, we, we can't project three years, we can figure out how to get on par with them next year, right?
No.
This year?
Yes, I can do this year and then we can just, if, if I know that you want to match Silverton this year and we'll stick with our percentages for year. Two and three, that's great, cause Silverton, we won't know what they're gonna get till January.
Okay, so then I think what we need to do is match the base. Figure out how to match the base salary and then keep the current percentages that were already agreed upon.
Okay.
Through negotiations and arbitration, correct?
Mediation.
Mediation, that's right, thank you.
And I'm assuming you want. A full year's cost?
Yeah. If we really want to get fancy, you could show me what that difference, well, yeah, what that difference equates to compared to our vacancy savings.
I'll do my best.
I'll help.
That's not what I would.
Well, what's gonna come back for a motion, what's, what's, what's gonna, motion gonna say?
It would, it would be, you guys would either accept it as is or. What was presented last meeting or what I presented here or something in between.
We'll do that. It's changes where we're comparing to. We don't, no longer be comparing to Howard, Kokeel, Toma, Amville, Toledo, and Murdock Creek.
Correct.
We were now changing to what Silverton is. And live and die by that.
Well, for, for, for this contract, yeah.
For three years and we're not for the full three years, we're just setting our base. We're seeing if we can set our base the same and then maintain the previously negotiated adjustments.
Not to just extend the conversation, but how far, how far off are Nigels wages in. Other departments from Silverton if we're gonna make this comparison?
You've not even gone down that road.
Also, we have the. Answer. To our citizens. About the increases we give our employees versus what they maybe get in real life and what those are. Are their wages going up twenty percent or more over three years? I don't know. I guess I'm saying I doubt it.
I guess I don't worry about that. Because we've been so far behind and because we've been unable to keep a fully staffed police force.
Let's see if all the other ones have the same issues.
They do. I, I just finished my year as the president of Oregon Association Chiefs Police, I'm actually the past president currently. Staffing is one of the biggest issues that we have, staffing over tension. Oregon Police Bureau just hired twenty two. The Oregon State Police are going to be doing a class of sixty. They pay significantly higher than we do, significantly. And especially for the state police, they're all over the state, and they're in small communities, they're in big communities, they're all over the state. And yes, staffing is, is a, is a huge deal, but the city of Jervis. Not necessarily our closest neighbor, but they currently only have two officers. Yeah, but they have other issues with their community as well. City of Silverton is fully staffed. City of Kaiser is not fully staffed, city of Salem is not fully staffed. And I could go around. I, I'm probably irritating you now, I don't mean.
No, 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 you're validating what my. Thoughts are, but that, it's not as simple as just paying more per hour. And it, and it's, and it's not as simple as picking one city that might. Have a higher standard of living than we do in Mount Angel, I don't know. Yeah.
Well.
So I, 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 so in fairness, Jack. What are you trying to do here, right? What, what, what would be my standards? I don't have answer for that.
Yeah.
So I get that. It was just, it's just awful big numbers for me and with no end inside of those awful big numbers ever changing for the next time around.
Appreciate that. But all over Oregon, like the mayor said, those numbers continue to escalate.
The cost of workers, the CPIU, CPIW. This is the cost of wages. Uh, wherever I have that at, in the last three years, two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five. CPI index for worker for wages has been two point three, two point nine, two point six increases. And that's what I see. And it's, it follows the CPIU for major cities, which has been three point one, three point two, two point seven.
I think we're still trying to catch up though is the problem and maybe that's what's causing those percentages to seem way too high. But when I'm comparing admin assistant to an Amazon box filler, I'm really struggling.
That could be true in a lot of things, we can't help but Amazon pays their workers. Private company.
SEIU just settled for a six and a half percent increase plus seventeen hundred dollar. Um, certain people getting another seventeen hundred dollars. And then they have a whole host of other things. And they're getting an eleventh step, we only have six. So just to kind of put that in perspective for our phone card that literally just got voted on last week. For the state workers union. So, all right, I'm gonna move on unless anybody's got an issue with that. Is that clear, Motera?
I wrote down what you asked for and I will bring that back.
All right, let's move on to the IGA with the city of Woodburn.
Uh, we need a new contract with our IT department. So in order to get the e-ticketing software, we need to get this IGA that we should have had in place back in twenty twenty. Yeah, is there any questions?
Questions? Motions?
I move to authorize Mark Daniel, city manager, she's chief of police to sign the IGA with her. Police records, we have to consider that assistance services.
Well, second. Motion by counselor Hooper, seconded by counselor Black, can have a roll call, please.
For Sorga. Counselor Donahue. Counselor Ah is absent, counselor Bala. Counselor Eater.
Aye.
Counselor Hooper.
Aye.
Mayor Bell.
Aye. Moving on. Item nine B, street sweeper purchase and lease agreement. When Jackie's done passing notes, we'll have Alan talk about his new street sweeper he wants. The Denver fifty one hundred.
Uh, in January of twenty twenty, a used Schwartz A seven hundred was purchased from the city of Dallas for twenty five thousand dollars. That sweeper has required repairs over twenty five thousand dollars since February.
That sweeper has required repairs over twenty-five thousand dollars since February twenty-four. Couple of different street sweepers were looked at for purchase in the Schwartz A seven. Tornado was determined. The purchase is through an interstate cooperative procurement with SWS equipment and authorized dealer with the Schwartz. The purchase of a new Schwartz A seven tornado using a source well cooperative procurement will be, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-two cents. The city has asked for a five-year lease with the end of payments of eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. The city attorney has reviewed the purchase agreement and the lease agreement, and had no opposition to any language. Resolution is requested to be included in the lease documents. The purchase of the sweeper was appropriated in the twenty-five, twenty-six adopted budget capital outlay department, and listed in capital improvement program, the available placement schedule. Recommendation is to authorize Mark Daniel to sign a purchase agreement and lease agreement for the Schwartz A seven.
Any questions from council? Oh, we need to, before we talk about this, we need to open the joint hearing with the Contract Review Board. And I need to ask if there is anyone from the public here to discuss the contract before us now for the street sweeper purchase and lease. Hearing none. I will entertain any questions from council as to this item. Any questions?
Is this a new street sweeper? Brand new.
What's the suspected life?
Hmm, ten to fifteen years, uh, ten years it starts. Yeah, that's the maintenance into it, fifteen years, twenty years. Probably looking at replacement. By twenty.
Twenty-five thousand dollar a year.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, just a curious question. I don't know how much cash on hand we have. Why lease instead of without right purchase?
Because we don't have enough cash on hand.
Yeah, you don't have enough cash on you.
To make our other lease payments.
Yeah. It would, it would drain some.
Um. So, it's been a long time since I bought a street sweeper. What, uh, what led us to this model and how does it compare price-wise to similar models? Are we, are we getting a trusty, reliable Toyota Camry or are we getting the Cadillac Escalade or did you get the, imported Yugoslavian? Get the Gremlin?
Actually, this is the, the same, same model, same brand as the last two sweepers we've had. The last two, uh, one we have currently and the one prior to that, were Schwartz as well. They're just older models, um. They did hold up pretty well, uh, like this says, we bought it from Dallas, um, and they, they drove theirs eight hours a day, five days a week. Um, and it lasted a long time. I'm not sure how much maintenance they put into it. Um, we drove it for a few years and then we started finding stuff wrong with it, but, um, they seem to be solid machines. The other one we tested out was an Elgin and that was significantly higher.
What was the price on the Elgin?
I don't have that right now. But it was up to, it was probably around seventy-five thousand dollars more.
I was gonna say, this one was just under four hundred. That one was just under five hundred thousand.
No.
I remember it was almost the same as the back truck.
Yeah.
Um, second question, our annual lease payment of eighty-seven through eighty-five, uh, is that already budgeted and will not, uh, require any additional adjustments?
I think there'll be a slight adjustment, um, but it, it doesn't need to be a budget adjustment, but we're gonna have a bunch of budgetary adjustments with payroll and everything. So if there is any adjustment, it will be included in that.
All right, my last thing is, is when we do get, um, the new Schwartz tornado, um, our garbage day is on Thursday. Our sweeper runs first thing Friday morning. Not everybody gets their cans in. And we have some vehicles that have a tendency to not move and grow things underneath them. When we get this new hot rod, can we potentially do a little analysis on additional communication for when we'd like people to not be parked on the streets? If possible, and maybe reconsider what day of the week we do it?
Yeah.
Based on garbage cans? It just, I hate seeing the street sweeper go down and make the bigs for each, right? I mean, it doesn't turn on a dime and so we end up missing chunks of the street for people who missed that one evening of taking their garbage can in. This one might turn on again. For three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, I think it should be like one of those zero turn anyways. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to authorize Mark Daniel to sign the purchase agreement and lease agreement for the Schwartz A seven tornado. Second?
Uh, a motion by councillor Eater, seconded by, uh, councillor Hooper. Have a roll call please.
Councillor Eater?
Hi.
Councillor Sorga is absent. Councillor Donahue, hi. Councillor Ah is absent. Councillor Blet, hi. Councillor Eater? Did I already call?
You already called me.
Hooper.
Hi. I think I was the first.
I got off my schedule here and I just had to send a shot. Good, Mayor Babb.
Hi.
Um. I have nine C, audit report for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Tara?
Uh, this year I opted to try something different. I'm open to feedback. I decided to give you guys a link to the audit report to review it. And then once you had a chance to look at it, if you had questions and you really wanted the auditor to make a report, I could bring him in. But I didn't feel like there was much maybe desire for that. So anyways, I tried this. Let me know if you like that. If, and let me know if you want our auditor to come make a report.
It worked perfectly.
Okay, good.
Well, I did not, you know. But is there anything in the report that you think that we should know?
There was no, there was no auditor comments. There was nothing that we did wrong. We didn't overexpend any of our appropriations. We, our ending fund balances are growing in every fund slightly. So.
Thank you.
Wow.
Any other questions? All right, audit services contract. Tara?
So our contract is about to expire at the end of this current fiscal year, which means we don't have somebody to audit the current fiscal year. So, uh, the last time I had to find an auditor, I didn't have very much time and I didn't get a very good response. So I wanted to initiate this process a little bit earlier. So I started, I think in July, I put out, uh, requests, um. I went out to three local places that I could find that were registered with the state of Oregon. Um, they all had offices in Salem that I reached out to and I got three responses. So that was encouraging. Um, I did a comparison and our current auditors with the, uh, calculating the cost, including a single audit, which we potentially could come up to with the grant funding we're getting. Uh, our current auditors ended up being the cheapest option over the life of the contract. So I would like, and that's what I propose, is to continue with our current auditors for another four years, initial term with two additional renewal terms of two years. So, eight-year contract if, if things go up.
Questions?
He goes up.
Pardon?
He goes up every year.
Yeah. All of them did. I asked them for the, for them to quote me four years.
Any other questions?
Okay, this needs a contractor review board as well.
Then let's open the joint meeting with the contractor review board. Let's ask if anybody in the public would like to comment on the contract we are reviewing. Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
I move to authorize Mark Daniel to sign the personals, personals, personal service agreement with Singer.
Well said.
Uh, motion by councillor Hooper, seconded by councillor Blet. Can I have a roll call please?
Councillor Eater?
Hi.
Councillor Hooper, hi. Councillor Sorga is absent. Councillor Donahue, hi. Councillor Ah is absent. Councillor Blet, hi. Mayor Babb.
All right. I now need to close that joint meeting with the contract review board. Move on to item nine F, the well number, well number seven hypochlorite generation system, and open a new joint meeting with the contract review board. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to discuss this contract, Paulie?
You don't.
Hearing none. Let's see. If he just. Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
In October of two thousand twenty-three, the Oregon Health Authority mandated the city of Mount Angel to maintain a disinfectant essential due to persistent coliform bacteria in the drinking water. This required installation of treatment at both well and, well six and well seven. In two thousand twenty-four, the council approved the installation of a hypochlorite generation system at well six. At that time, it was determined that well seven could use the old generation system that was installed years prior. Since then, well seven generation system has had issues with producing a consistent chlorine residual and the recommendation is to replace the old system with a modern hypochlorite generation, generation system like the one that is installed at well six. Three companies were solicited. TMG is the only company that submitted a bid for a total of eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars. In June of twenty-five, the city council approved the purchase and installation for hypochlorite generation system at well seven during the budget presentation. The recommendation is, uh, city staff recommends hiring TMG services to remove old hypochlorite generation systems at well seven and replace it with new model technology.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I have two questions. Uh, who installed, the TMG installed the generation system at well six? Okay. And are we confident? I hate using the only bid. So are we confident that that is, uh, if we were to go back out, that is, uh, a reasonable expected amount and not the, we don't want to do it price?
Yes, it matches or it's actually a little below probably than what you would at well six.
That's why I needed to know when we're pulling from a single contract, so, or a single bidder. Thank you. That was my only questions. Any motions?
I move to authorize city manager Mark Daniel to sign the contract with TMG services and new hypochlorite generation system at well seven.
Uh, motion is made by councillor Hooper, seconded by councillor Donahue. Roll call please.
Councillor Blet, hi. Councillor Eater?
Hi.
Councillor Hooper, hi. Councillor Sorga is absent. Councillor Donahue, hi. Councillor Ah is absent. Mayor Babb.
Hi. And now I will close the joint meeting with the contractor review board. Moving on to city managers' reports.
Give it really quick, uh, two of the items I covered in my weekly update that went out on Friday. First thing though that I'll mention, uh, is our first citizen with the speed check equipment. Someone has checked it out and has been actively engaged with checking speed in front of the house. I can't wait to hear what the results are. We'll be checking in about a week or two.
Probably want to schedule a little bit of time for the return of that equipment.
We will have it.
You're gonna find out.
And in answer to the second question asked by council but not answered, um, the second question was, uh, at what speed over the posted speed limit would the driver receive a letter from the speed check program? Now, I like to use discretion, so, you know, I could, if it's one mile an hour over the speed limit, I could very easily send someone a letter. Just explaining to them, if there is a statute that says if you're going one mile an hour over, yeah, you could be considered guilty, if found guilty in a court of law of violating the posted speed limit. But we'll try and aim for like five miles an hour or, or better, um, as opposed to the one or two miles an hour of the speed. So I just ask for a little discretion. Or just like, yeah, if I was gonna be issuing citations, I generally look for fifteen and over because then I can prove excessive speed and I could, I can prove that it's going, it's dangerous to the community and those types of things. Not to say that you couldn't lower, but it's been a safe place for me to be in years past, so. That's what we'll be. Um, the Parks Master Plan grant that council allowed me to, uh, uh, put in for was granted from the state of Oregon. Uh, just as a reminder, um, that will pay a fifty thousand dollars towards our Parks Master Plan. There's a ten thousand dollar match on that, but, um, that should hopefully take care of our Parks Master Plan. Uh, the funds are not yet available, so not yet going to create an RFP and find someone who can do that work. They asked me not to move ahead just until, uh, the jury.
Question? Do either of the firms already under contract do this work and are we available to utilize their existing contracts?
I don't.
Okay.
I haven't. I just, you know, got this notice that we, we got the grant. And so before I start doing a lot of work, I want to make sure that we actually got the grant.
Perfect.
There's a lot of things happening in our state budget. I just went to a meeting in Bend today, uh, full of doom and gloom and, and that type of thing, so, um, just hopeful that it's gonna continue to move ahead, just like the vehicle barrier grant that I got, um, to purchase a trailer and eight of those vehicle barriers that we used during Oktoberfest, which worked really, really well. Um, yeah, worked really, really well. And so that grant, um, if I was to go out to the open market and buy them with a GSA account, would be about a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So. Free money, free things are, are always great. Um, yeah, I think we're slowly recovering from Oktoberfest. I know I only have a few things left on my agenda to get taken care of. Tara's been working hard, uh, on uh, reimbursing and paying people and that type of thing and figuring out what hours our police officers came in from out of town and actually worked. Um, the machine discrepancies, but she and Michelle are working through that pretty well. And, uh, yeah. That's all I have to report.
Thank you.
For the, the library director? Well, sure. I think, yeah, we have thirteen. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, so of course you're all aware that Jackie is retiring and we have opened up the position to the outside and we currently have thirteen applicants for the position.
It closed today at five, so we should not have more than thirteen, but I'll check my email one last time.
Choose wisely.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Councillor Black? Anything to report?
Nothing.
Councillor Donahue? Councillor Hooper.
No.
Rock and roll, here we go. Um, I don't have that much this evening, other than obviously we just got through Oktoberfest. This Oktoberfest was a little bit different uh for me personally. First Oktoberfest is the mayor. And uh, all the um. Ear bending that comes with it, I think is the best way to put it. Um. There were a few things that were a little different this year. Um, one is our uh. There was a delegate from our sister community, uh Engelberg, Switzerland here. They came and celebrated the sixtieth Oktoberfest with us. Um, hosted uh by the Abbey. Um, it was very interesting to learn about how um integral the role of the Abbey is in their community when compared it to. To here. Um, it was also great to understand the history as to how they became our sister community. Um, it wasn't randomly drawn out of a hat or anything like that. There's very strong historical ties between us. Um, and they very strongly wanted us to discuss ways of. One of their big goals right now is educational type tourism. And so that is something that uh I think we're gonna continue to discuss. Between us and try to figure out what that looks like and what kind of programs we might be able to do. Maybe it starts at a. School age level, um, something like those pen pals, I don't know. We're gonna have, we're gonna have some discussions about what what that means. Um. Uh, we were able to have them part of the closing ceremonies. It was pretty awesome to see somebody normally very reserved and shy to get on stage in front of a lot of. Uh, beer drinking, uh, red-blooded Americans and see just how excited that rubs off on people. Um, it was, it was a good thing to see. Uh, the other thing too is if you haven't watched it, um. The. Associate station K K T U and its K U N P, I believe. I get the letters wrong. If you go to um A R C P D X, um, or you search Oktoberfest K T U. Whatever on YouTube, they did a pretty cool um set of interviews about our community and it was more than just. Uh, Oktoberfest included myself, our chief of police and city manager. Uh, local business owners, local farmers, uh representatives from the Abbey. Other people I'm forgetting, Chamber, Discover Mount Angel, and it really painted a much uh bigger picture. So if people are kind of curious what Mount Angel is about, um, or you're kind of interested in anything and some background to what's going on around us. Um, outside our own little bubble, that's a, that's a good thing to watch. Um, I think it turned out pretty well and uh. It was interesting to have Portland reporters in town. Um, they're used to in doing this type of interview with. Let's say eight people and the eight people normally have never met each other. Um, when you come to Mount Angel and you interview eight people, at least two of them are related and six of them know each other and. Um, it was, uh, it really showed the kind of community that we have when um in stark contrast to some of the other communities, the interview such as. Gresham, Hillsborough, some of those communities, so. It's worth um checking out, skip the first five minutes, that's my part, it's probably not worth watching. Um. And with that, I will ask if there's anything else for the good of the order, otherwise we will be adjourned.
You gave a good opening statement. The opening ceremony.
Oh, open, yes, yes, had to go up and do opening ceremonies and um. I do hope that uh Oktoberfest comes in and gives us a a thorough update as to what happened. And I plan on having some discussions with them. Um, I feel like they need to do a little more positive. Um, marketing. Just to help, so many people are new to the community, I kind of want them to get out of, um. Their bubble to share more with our local community, why we have this festival. Um, I think it's lost on a lot of new people to the community. And I really hope that they take me up on that and I hope that we can find ways to help them with that. Um, being a good mutual partner. So with that.